Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Lawler.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Sneed.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
And Mr. Hilsinger.
Here. Okay, so we have six. First item is minutes from the executive meeting of March 28th. Need a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
Discussion. Discussion, anyone? Seeing on all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it six zero. We have no status sheet. No committee reports. We'll go to the first new business item. PC ten dash twenty-two Gregory and Lois Mans.
Good afternoon. PC ten dash twenty-two Gregory and Lois Mans was a request for a special business permit procedure in the R five residence district for a point one eight acre tract of land on the south side of Gravoy Road west of Vassal Drive. As you recall, this site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red. On this aerial, you can see some of the surrounding commercial development on Gravoy Road as well as the single family residences behind the site. This is the preliminary site development plan that was shown at public hearing. The site will remain residential in appearance. The petitioner indicated that they would use the garage for two employee parking spaces and add three new parking spaces at the site. The site plan also shows a new accessible entrance and a walkway leading to Vassal Drive. The department is recommending the following revisions. First, removal of the walkway, which the petitioner indicated plans to do at public hearing. Only four parking spaces are required at the site and the department recommends only providing the required parking to reduce the amount of pavement. We're also recommending reducing the amount of pavement proposed around the new entrance to the the entrance to the new accessible door. The department is recommending a decorative site proof fence along the west side of the proposed parking to provide a buffer from the neighboring residents. And lastly, we're recommending that residential style foundation plantings be used at the site. At public hearing, there was concern voiced about how the development would impact traffic. Traffic at Gravoy and Vassal Drive. The department would note that while it cannot prohibit users of the insurance office from parking on Vassal Drive, parking is already prohibited on the west side of Vassal Drive approximately seventy-five feet south of Gravoy Road. Additionally, subsequent to public hearing, the petitioner submitted this exhibit showing the view looking down Gravoy Road from Vassal Drive, where the vehicles are currently proposed, showing that the location of the parking does not degrade site distance on Gravoy. The department is recommending approval of this request. We find that the special business permit procedure is the appropriate mechanism for developing a small, low intensity office at this site. The underlying residential zoning will not change and the site will be able to return to a residential use after the SVP expires. Additionally, we find that the proposed office reuse will provide a low intensity transition to the existing single family homes and are recommending the following specific conditions of development. To reduce the amount of new pavement at the site. To add a decorative site proof fence. To use residential style landscaping and lighting. And note that the hours of operation should be Monday through Friday, eight AM to five thirty PM. So at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for denial. As this this proposal really does not provide that to relate to the community in which it's a part of, and that's the subdivision. It will distract from that.
Hey, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Discussion, anyone else?
Wayne, this is Keith.
Yeah, Keith.
All right. I guess the reason why that we're saying that it should be strictly residential is because it's on the corner. But up and down at Gravoy, there's many, you know, many homes that have been converted to businesses and I don't. The fact that it would go back to residential if if the insurance company didn't work out there is kind of favorable to me, but that's just my opinion.
So if I may, the the underlying zoning is not being requested for the change. This is a special procedure that would lay over top of the residential zoning. So when requesting an SVP, a petitioner has to be required to show that they meet the standards, the the structure. And by the the department's recommendation is that we do find that it meets all the requirements of the SVP. It is located along a commercial corridor of more than four lanes. And it can be cited in such a way that it would not be detrimental to the adjoining uses. And one thing that I think is is important and of note is that because the underlying zoning is not changing. This is actually one procedure in the zoning ordinance in which the SVP will expire. They essentially have to re-ask the planning commission every two years and that can be done through a correspondence item or something in the future if the commission were to grant this special business permit. But that is, the underlying zoning is not changing. And internally, the structure should remain residential in style so that the the home could be sold in the future and immediately reused for a residential use.
Jacob, those are all, I don't disagree with the analysis that you've made. What I what I have a concern for is that the it it will change the character of that community. And and whether it goes back or not, it will change it for the duration that it is commercial. If that was a subdivision that I lived in, I would be against it. I think it does change the community. It does not consider all the other homes, the residents in that area just because it borders Gravoy's. While it may meet certain criteria, I just think it's a bad choice of of disrupting that community.
Bill, how how do you think it disrupts the community?
I I think it does because it it will be known as a commercial site. It will, you you'll have commercial parking on it. I mean, there's no one else that will have even that amount of parking in there. I I I I don't know that they're even going to maintain the the entrance monuments.
So there would be no ability for them to 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 change or to manipulate those entries because those are very attractive into the subdivision. That would not be, they would not have the right to do so to 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 change those monuments because I concur. Those are beautiful monuments and very critical to, I think, to the cohesive nature of that of that neighborhood off of Gravoy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the total parking spaces is four?
That's what, that's the staff's recommendation is that they would be required for and that they would then provide for. They're showing five, so we're recommending that they reduce that to a grand total of four. So two in the garage, one immediately adjacent to the garage, and then they would be permitted to do, you know, one additional space.
How many spaces?
We have no ability to restrict. We have no ability to restrict employee parking along Vassal?
Um, so that the commission doesn't have, because that Vassal is a public right of way. You know, there's no, you know, they're they're proposing that that the that the parking for the employees would be in the garage. So inside the existing garage at the home is where the employees would be would be parking the majority of the time. And and we found that to be a reasonable, a reasonable place to put the majority of employee parking. They said they're at, and at public hearing, they indicated there would be at max three individuals, three employees on staff anyway, which would be leave an extra space open for if there was anyone, a client that needed to attend or come to the come to the site.
Yeah, we had a a situation at Telegraph and Burncoat in which there's a dental office. And the dental office proceeded to have all their employees park on Burncoat on both sides of the street to keep their lot open for patients. And it created quite a nuisance for that subdivision.
Mm hmm. I'm wondering, and this is, and Commissioner Hilsinger, I'm just wondering whether this is because, you know, medical office is generally a fairly intensive use. They are, they generate a lot of vehicle traffic, a medical office. That's why you see the zoning ordinance require more parking for medical offices than other types of office uses. But without looking into the specifics of that, that's my my guess is that at the time that they've discovered that, you know, even that site, whatever that the parking constraints at that site. You know, the staff finds that at this site, you know, an insurance office really is a very low generating use for vehicles. And at max, there would be three staff and at public hearing, the petitioner indicated there would probably generally be fewer than that. You know, so staff found that four sites are for, you know, that four parking spaces are are reasonable. You know, staff would also point out that I think it's three lots down just from an aerial. The the address being, what is this address? Ninety-two twenty-two Gravoy, the entire front yard is paved. Then two lots down further at ninety ninety-two thirty Gravoy, almost the entire front yard is paved. And we have witnessed and, you know, I have personally seen folks parked on the sidewalk and parked in in sort of oddball places. So, you know, there is some.
Sorry, I was just going to add that I pulled up the the sites on Burncoat and both of those corner lots are are zone C eight now. That was a different procedure.
Yeah.
And back to the parking and the subdivision. Don't normal subdivision parking, can't four cars park at a subdivision house counting the parking in the garage?
So, you know, Mel, correct me, is it norm typically two vehicles is usually what we, the county standard for a single family?
One per dwelling unit, but most people propose two and, you know, looking at the aerial for this site, they, you know, they indicated it was a two car garage and then there are three cars on the driveway in the aerial.
Where does their company park? Are they allowed to park on the street? If somebody comes to visit you, where do they park?
For the insurance office.
Yeah, so yeah, so if someone came to the insurance office, there was one, you know, even if three staff were there, there would already be, there would at least be one parking space available for a visitor to come to come. But two, the zoning ordinance permits, you know, in the off chance that that space is occupied. You know, someone could park on street on Vassal. But because of the very limited nature of how insurance offices in particular operate, you know, staff finds that the the chances that there'd be one car here and one car there along Vassal at any given time are, you know, not detrimental to the overall neighborhood, particularly because when you drive through the neighborhood, there are frequently cars parked on the street anyway.
That's what I was getting at, not so much the insurance company parking, but people that already live in the subdivision and they get company. Does that company sometimes park on the road in front of the residents?
Oh.
I do it at my subdivision all the time.
I I would just say that parking on the public right of way in this subdivision is permitted by whomever. As long as it's not like storage of, you know, vehicles for a company or something like that. But, you know, any resident for any purpose can park along the public right of way in this in this neighborhood, including.
Would we in effect be denying them a right that the current residents already have?
Uh, you know, I don't know whether I would characterize it quite as such. You know, we're really dealing with the property rights exclusively for this for this piece of ground. You know, when we discuss the on-street parking, we are, you know, just attempting to point out that there are, because of the extremely low nature of the traffic generation of the site, we find that parking on street from time to time is 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 reasonable for for a use with such limited vehicular generating uses.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion with a second for denial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Gary, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to one.
Before we move on to the next petition, because staff will need to go and revise this, revise this letter to to reflect a denial. I have that I have concerns that this will change the community is disruptive. Is there anything else that the commission would like noted in its letter of decision denying this request besides those two, besides those two points?
Bill, you got anything?
No, I don't.
Okay.
And so then I have that Mr. Elliott was the only no vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What, this is Keith, I got a question. And if they, if they decide to come back and 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 do a C eight and put that on like Gravoy, like many businesses are around here, what's going to stop somebody from doing that? And once it's a C eight, it's a C eight.
Any C eight has to come to the commission.
So we would also have greater control.
Yeah, all, you know, we could definitely discuss this, although I think that staff would find that this is actually because it keeps the nature of the use of the site remains residentially zoned, it's a lower intensity than if you switch it to a commercial zoning category. Which was part of the, you know, part of staff's, you know, when we made that recommendation for approval. You know, we were concerned and and do want to keep the residential, that sort of residential nature intact. But this provides, this this procedure provided the applicant with the opportunity to use it in these shoes temporarily and there could be a future in which, you know, a new property owner wants to revert it and reuse it as a as a single family home. And and the thing with the sing with the special business permit procedure is that it was written to only permit an insurance agent and the rights don't run with the land. So this this procedure would have would have expired and expired and requires renewal every two years. So with that, with a C eight, it that that completely changes the underlying zoning that and changes a whole, a whole host of things. I mean, and really what you're looking at is is that this site is, to speak very speculatively, this site is is quite honestly quite too small to to really be able to 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 really warrant change to a C eight zoning without, you know, someone proposing a much larger development at that site. Yeah.
This was part of the subdivision?
I I'm sorry, there was some breakup there.
Wasn't this home part of the subdivision?
Yes, this home is part of that subdivision.
Did you look at whether it could be changed?
We did receive a copy of the subdivision indentures, but I, since those are private agreements between the property owners within the subdivision, we can't enforce any of the provisions of the indentures.
Well, the reason I asked is when we did the, we did a Walgreens at Telegraph and Jaeger, it was part of the subdivision. In order for the Walgreens to go in, it had to be brought out of the subdivision.
It's possible that was subject to a PEU and if it were, then it would need to come out since the PEU would have been encumbering that as well. But this subdivision is 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 not subject to a PEU since it's a lot older.
It's not a very sophisticated indenture.
Um, I.
Probably an old one.
Pull it up.
What I will say is that the property down at ninety-two thirty-eight Gravoy, which is on this exact same block and is also a part of the Gravoy Gardens is has also been the subject of an ever successful SVP. So this exact, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven houses down, this exact same subdivision has had a special business procedure successfully put in and is currently still operating there along Gravoy Road.
I I would also add that no one's come forward with a C eight and it doesn't mean this commission would consider it and approve it. So I don't see where the possibility of a C eight should enter into our decision at this particular time for this petition.
Oh, I can.
There's nothing to say that someone couldn't come tomorrow and with or without this being approved, could not come back tomorrow and say, we'd like to put C eight there and then we would have to consider that. And I would hope that the commission would seriously not approve that.
Okay. Nothing else then?
One more question.
Yeah.
Did did this business owner go back to the neighborhood with with what improvements they were going to make and what changes?
We did res, I I apologize for speaking over you. We did receive some additional public comment indicating that, you know, some of the abutting property owners and other residents in the subdivision did have some conversation with the petitioner. And some of them, you know, did have their concerns satisfied, some did not. But they did go out and talk to the the neighborhood again after the public hearing.
So so could could this owner within reason about amount of time ask to have another public hearing?
Is it a year, Mel, if the council did not, if, excuse me, if the commission denies granting this?
Yes, if the commission did not grant this SVP, they could not request an SVP on the site for one year, like Mr., you know, like we've kind of alluded to, they could make a a request for a C eight because that is a different request. But whenever a request is denied and if the council concurs, it it precludes the developer from making that identical request for a year.
The other SVPs, are they due to expire?
So this is a question of, you know, the way that the that it is written is that SVPs are are to be.
Two, two years.
They work for two years and then they're supposed to be continually reevaluated.
Do we know when the next one's coming up? I don't recall any coming up for renewal.
No.
We're gonna go this route that we would deny all SVPs.
We've not received requests for renewals recently, if that's the question.
Do those come before the planning commission? Are they operating illegal if they didn't follow the guidelines?
I don't have an answer for that because there's the, there's a question of whether to, whether the county should have been, you know, reminding these these users to to be doing this every two years. This two-year limit only became to our attention because this is the first SVP that, to be really honest, that Mel and I have done since we've gotten to the county and I've been here for seven years. So this was the first time that we've really dug dug deep into the SVP process.
But these come before the planning commission.
Right. If someone did request an extension, it would come before the planning commission, sort of like, you know, any other correspondence item, really.
I mean, what happens if it does not come before us and we have a two-year rule on it? What happens?
And they may be operating legally non-conforming if the county has not exercised its its enforcement mechanisms. Is is kind of really where I think that a property owner would have, you know, depending upon how the county, you know, engages in its enforcement operations.
I don't remember any of these coming back to us.
It may, they may not have. And, you know, this is one of those, this is an enforcement question that only because this is the first SVP that we have seen in a significant period of time that as we start looking through the process and procedures. You know, what we were expecting out of this was an opportunity to, if this if this had been granted, would have been, you know, walking through this for the first time, I think probably for the commission too, because this this most recent one is from the early nineties. So it's been, you know, thirty years, you know, since I think one of these procedures have have gone on. So this would be an opportunity to establish a new process to make sure that things are in conformance from the very beginning. But because it's the will of the commission not to 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 deny granting the SVP, you know, we won't necessarily, we may look at these other ones and make sure that they're, if they're still operating, they may not be operating. They may be residential and we just have it on our maps as, you know, as a.
Six or seven houses down, there was one operating?
There was one that underwent an SVP. I don't know whether it's operating at the point, when I'm looking at my maps, the county's maps, I can see every property and every zoning petition that's ever been on a property. And I know that there was a successful petition seven down along Gravoy Road.
Okay. Uh, nothing else, let's let's go on to PC eleven dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC.
Good afternoon. Before you is PC eleven dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC. As you recall, this is a request for an amended C eight for a one point six acre tract located on the south side of Lindbergh Boulevard, west of Five Oaks Parkway. And you can see from the county context and and recall that this parcel is in South County. And you can see the the parcel outlined in red in the aerial, in the aerial, excuse me. And then this view is just a little bit closer aerial view. You can see the parcel located on the south side of of Lindbergh, highly commercialized corridor and then the single family residential development to the south, south of the site. At the public hearing, the petitioner presented a site development plan. I'm showing minimal improvements to the site. They're proposing one new parking space to meet the the required parking for having a medical office. And and they are proposing a new fence around the the existing trash enclosure. And that's the location of the trash enclosure is outlined in blue. And then they're maintaining the existing access to Lindbergh as well as the existing cross-access agreement with the Valvoline site adjacent to the parcel. And they also presented the landscape plan. And the you can see sort of at the top of the plan, that is a landscape area along the the Lindbergh right of way. And then the the existing parking lot and then some internal landscaping in the parking lot and adjacent to the the building. So we are recommending approval this afternoon. Commercial uses and the C eight plan, commercial district procedure both continue to be appropriate at the site. And the existing office use and the proposed medical office use can both be operated in in a way so they're not detrimental to the surrounding land uses, specifically the the single family development to the south of the site. Some of the the site-specific conditions of development that we recommend include architectural review, which will involve equal treatment of all sides of the building as well as matching the architectural style of the building and the the proposed monument sign. And recommending enhanced landscaping, including requiring Missouri natives throughout the site as well as requiring that they meet the the requirements of the landscaping section of the zoning ordinance. And and then providing pedestrian access from the the existing sidewalk along Lindbergh to the site. So at this time, I would ask for a motion of approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? Anyone?
This is Bill, I'll make a motion for approval.
Keith, I'll second the motion.
Discussion, anyone?
I only have one question about the improvements. They talked about a fairly significant improvement that's behind the residence, it's on their property, but it wraps around the backside over to the residence and that's the water retention, which is really an eyesore and they had grand plans of redoing that. But I don't see that in the recommended improvement nor the proposed.
So the the stormwater detention is is as directed by MSD. And whatever MSD recommends, if if, you know, the existing. Um, whatever M S D recommends, if if, you know, the existing detention is sufficient for the for the runoff on the site. Um, it's not like they would be required to make improvements if M S D, um, you know, were to state that that improvements need to be made. Um, you know, we we would go along with that, but that that's, um, really that we leave that up to M S D.
Well, I I'm I'm not talking about, uh, the size or 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 the operation of it. I'm talking about the condition of it and the looks of it and the breathing of mosquitoes and everything we heard at public hearing. And and they said they would do that. Why would that not be as part of the proposed improvements?
So the the county does not enforce, uh, M S D's regulations. Um, so that would be up to M S D to determine if the existing detention is sufficient as is, or if improvements need to be made. And if the the petitioner or developer, um, wants to make those improvements outside of M S D that, you know, requiring such that, I mean, that would be a discussion between them and M S D, not the county.
Hmm.
What, does the county have anything to say about about, uh, a yielding amount of mosquitoes?
So the county does have vector control that goes out, um, and sprays. Um, there's a, you know, the, I think it's the Department of Health that has a, um, and they have a a a very well, um, understood route, those take and timelines. Um, you know, what would happen is that, um, during the permitting process, because this would require a new site development plan, um, is would be the time when when planning staff would, um, go to the petitioner and ask and say, you know, during public hearing. Uh, you indicated that there would be improvements to the, um, detention facility. What sorts of, are you changing it from? Because right now it's a retention pond, which is an older style of of, um, type of of stormwater facility. Um, you know, asking whether they intend to change it to a detention, which is, you know, the dry, the the dry basins that, um, you know, that 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 address those. But I would echo what Paul said is that, um, if M S D is not going to require, um, changes, large changes to the detention facility. Um, you know, it would be more us asking for them, um, to explain that during the permitting process. Um, because they did at public hearing indicate that they, uh, intend to make some, um, changes and we expect that they will as part of the improvement because this is just going to be a property improvement type of question. I think that what you see in the staff's recommendation is, we don't have any additional conditions to add to it. Um, you know, if it's the commission's will, um, you know, you could require additional landscaping in the rear. Um, you could, uh, that's really the sort of as in terms of a land use question, really the sorts of big ones. Um, because we don't have any sort of teeth or ability to say you have to change this from a retention to a detention facility. Um, they just have to keep it in good and.
I'm not asking.
Good order.
I I'm not suggesting that, Jacob. I'm not suggesting that they have to change the type of of detention or retention or or whatever. I mean, that's that that'd be unreasonable for us to, uh, request that. There there there's that same type of detention, uh, ponds all over the county and people are not going to change them unless they're, uh, that they make a major change and the county makes them do it. Or M S D makes them do it. But they did say that that was, uh, something that is a problem that we heard it at public hearing. And you're saying that there's nothing we can do at this juncture. To have that as part of the conditions.
I'm open to hearing, you know, to to sort of hearing what it is the commission would like put into and and we will, we will do as directed. Um, you know, within, you know, giving advice, whether we find something would be, um, ultimately enforceable or not. Um, but, you know, I would be very open to hearing, um, you know, what kinds of conditions the commission would like. Because what I would have expected for something like this is that during the permitting process, um, they they would have indicated to us the types of improvements that they intend to make. At this point, um, I, whether they need to dredge it, whether they need to sort of deepen it, I'm I'm not certain. And without an M S D, without them going to M S D, um, you know, for to 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 sort of verify some of that. Um, I don't know what kinds of conditions the commission would like to have added into its recommendation.
If 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 they don't want the mosquitoes to be in there, they need to put a fountain in in that detention base.
If you remember, we have one at, uh, Telegraph and Christopher, in which we required a, uh, fountain to be put in the detention to.
I think that's that's perfectly reasonable if it would, if the commission would like for a, you know, some sort of agitating device, a fountain, something that keeps the water moving to, uh, to reduce that.
And as a matter of note.
They never have put it in and the county has never forced them to.
Exactly.
That may be a question for the county councillor in terms of whether it's enforceable.
Trees.
So I think we. M S D does vector control, so.
I I'd like to withdraw my motion. And I would like to suggest that we change it. To to defer this, to put it on hold until. Staff gets back with the, uh, petitioner. And and see what they can put into their own. Uh, list of improvements that will deal with that for the neighborhood.
Okay, um, so the first has been withdrawn. Is that okay?
Second, second withdrawals.
Okay, further discussion. Bill, you making a motion for hold?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Go ahead and discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Eyes have it six-zero and, uh, we've got a hold on the item and Jacob, are you clear with? What is being asked?
To request the petitioner describe the changes that they intend to make to the detention facility.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then we'll go on to P C twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane LLC.
P C twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane LLC was a request for a change in zoning. From M three to C eight for a point-three-six acre tract of land on the east side of Mason Lane. Approximately one-hundred-and-eighty feet south of Manchester Road. And this is coming before you as a letter of recommendation this afternoon. As you recall, the site is in West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. On this aerial, you can see some of the commercial development fronting Manchester Road and along Mason Lane. There's this, uh, preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. The petitioner, um, has proposed to retain most of the site as is. Um, retaining the existing office, warehouse and garage. They're showing fourteen parking spaces at the site. They're also showing a new walkway leading from the southern portion of the parking lot to the entrance of the. For, uh, the primary structure and they are proposing to reface and use the existing freestanding sign in place. The department is recommending that the northern curb cut be reduced to forty feet. To be in line with the, um, commercial standards for curb cuts. Um, additionally, we are recommending residential-style landscaping around the primary structure. And that an alternative landscape plan be submitted for the southeastern corner of the site. As the amount of pavement and the existing conditions at the site make it, uh, difficult to provide more traditional buffer yards here. Um, so the department is recommending approval of this request. We find that commercial zoning is reasonable and in keeping with the surrounding land use. And that the, uh, C eight planned commercial district procedure allows for site-specific conditions of development to protect. Um, the surrounding permitted land uses. Um, we also find that the requested use is combat compatible with the surrounding uses on Mason Lane. And are recommending the following specific conditions of development, uh, to reduce the northern entrance. To add landscaping around the building and at the southeast corner of the site. And note that architectural review will be required. So I'm requesting a motion at this time.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, this is Keith. Like, make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
I suppose. Eyes have it six-zero. And we'll go on to P C thirteen dash twenty-two.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, as you recall, P C thirteen dash twenty-two, Abir Mesitif, is a request for a conditional use permit. In, uh, the C three shopping district for a zero-point-three-six acre tract located on the south side of Grabaway Road, uh, in the east quadrant of Niles Place. Uh, you can see from the county context map, uh, this parcel is is located in South County and you can see the parcel outlined in red, um, on the aerial. And then this aerial provides a closer view. Uh, you can see on the north side of Grabaway Road is, um, Afton Plaza and and Nine Mile Garden. Um, directly east abutting the site is the Afton, uh, Fire Protection District. Um, and then the, uh, the the site that was subject to P C ten dash twenty-two that you heard earlier is a little bit further east along Grabaway. And then south of the site is is primarily a single-family residential. Uh, the petitioner, uh, presented a preliminary site development plan at public hearing. And the plan shows, uh, limited site improvements. Um, they're proposing a new trash enclosure enclosure in the southeast corner of the site, kind of outlined in in blue. Um, and then they're also produce proposing some new curbing, um, in the spots that are outlined in red. Um, there was no landscaping proposed and no improvements to the structure itself were proposed. Uh, we are recommending denial of the of the request. Uh, the proposal fails to meet the requirements listed in the zoning ordinance for the granting of a conditional use permit. Uh, the proposed use is incompatible with the surrounding land use and development pattern. Um, additionally, the the minimal site improvements that are proposed do not serve to increase the aesthetics of the site. Um, or serve the health, safety and general welfare of the surrounding community. Um, so at this time, I would ask for a motion of denial.
We have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for denial. This is Keith.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it six-zero. And we'll go on to old business letters for approval. First one's P C oh-seven dash twenty-two Mid-America Hotels Corporation.
Um, yeah, as you recall, P C oh-seven dash twenty-two Mid-America Hotels Corporation was a request for a change in zoning from C four to C eight. For a one-point-seven-seven acre tract of land on the south side of Butler Hill Road, north of Mid-America Lane and approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet west of Mid-America Plaza. The site, as you recall, is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. Um, subsequent to your, uh, executive meeting, the petitioner provided, um, some additional correspondence. Uh, with requesting some modifications to the conditions of development, which it were, they. Requested to be allowed a pickup window on both the north and the south ends of the building. They would like no requirement for cross-access with lot three. No requirement for pedestrian access from Butler Hill Road. To be allowed twenty-five-foot light standards and to be allowed two curb cuts from Mid-America Lane. Um, along with that correspondence, they submitted the following exhibits. This one showing vehicle stacking at the north. Um, end of the building for that pickup window. Uh, showing a proposed ramp leading for pedestrian access from Butler Hill Road. And showing the, uh, flow of traffic from around the building when their vehicles stacked at the south pickup window. Staff, um, has modified attachment C to allow twenty-five-foot light standards at the site, which we feel is appropriate due to the commercial surroundings of the site. We've also added, um, as directed to the conditions requiring pedestrian pedestrian access from Butler Hill Road. So that this specific design of the pedestrian access can be determined during the permitting process. However, we continue to find the other conditions appropriate as drafted. Um, noting that no information about the tenants has been provided and whether or not the pickup windows would be high-intensity uses. That would, uh, provide, that would cause traffic circulation at the site. Um, additionally, the department would note that while this road, uh, Mid-America is. A private road, county would not approve two curb cuts at the site. And we find that there is no demonstrable land use reason justifying providing two curb cuts at this site. Um, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to to forward the letter of recommendation as written.
Can we, um? Let's go ahead and get a motion on first. Motion, anybody?
Are we making a motion to approve what?
This recommendation right here.
This recommendation. But it it, but it's.
It's been modified by the staff, what I'm seeing here.
At the last executive meeting, the commission voted to approve the staff recommendation for approval. And what's on the slide here are a couple modifications to, uh, two conditions, as Abby mentioned, regarding the lighting and the pedestrian access. We have not drafted the letter to change the conditions about allowing two pickup windows. Right now, the letter as written would only permit one pickup window and would only permit one curb cut. It would also still require cross-access with lot three to the east.
All right. That's my question. Uh, it's the letter, but, uh, you just explained the other things that. Uh, are part of that letter, which is the two pickup stations that I know staff would, uh, recommended not to do. Right. Okay.
Pickup windows. I've been told one is a, uh, one usage on one end is an ice cream store. And they don't have a usage for the other side where they want the other pickup window. But this would not include, uh, any kind of message boards or, uh, it would only be for orders that have been called in.
Hmm.
Is there any reason not to do two windows?
So the diagram, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This diagram, if you look at what Abby's prepared here, the blue line shows, you know, where a car would stop to pick up their order at the northern window. Uh, I feel like no matter how it's configured, those two, uh, paths will cross. So you can see how, in order for the person at the northern window to exit the site, they'll have to cross paths with the person going to access that southern window. Um, so without some sort of, you know. There's not any sort of circulatory aids to mitigate that conflict. Um, you know, like you mentioned, Wayne, we don't see any menu boards on this site or order stations. Um, and those sort of unknowns are are the bulk of our reasoning for limiting it to one pickup window.
Well, can we give them two windows without boards?
I think our concern, one is that I would note is that, yes, you could do, it is if the commission would would, it's if it's your will, it can be revised to two pickup windows. Um, you know, but one thing I would note is that in that inserts some sort of interpretation questions for staff, both in this department and in the Department of Transportation Public Works when we go to permitting for this. Um, think about Andy's Custard that does not have an order station. You order at the window and then think about the last time that you saw an Andy's Custard station in which traffic was wrapped around the building. Um, I know personally, I drove past the the one on Manchester Road on Saturday night, um, out in Kirk, um, Ellisville, Baldwin, that sort of area, Rock Hill, that area. Um, it was, um, the line was exceptionally long. I typically go to the one on Hanley, uh, in the, I think it's in Richmond Heights. Um, and it is, and it is in a development that's sort of almost exactly like this, where, um, it is a strip center. Um, and at basically what happens on, even on weeknights nowadays, um, when I go, there is a, the line is literally wrapped around the entire structure and that doesn't include a an order station. So without, you know, I I think staff's concern is that without the petitioner providing, um, a lot. So without, you know, I think staff's concern is that without the petitioner providing a lot of information about who these uses are, we're looking at a future of, you know, some real problems here because, say, this isn't Andy's or a user that generates that sort of traffic. What you would have is you'd have gridlock too, because you'd have cars that would be trapped in the blue line trying to get through cars in the yellow line. And it creates a, that conflict could ultimately trap people in. Additionally, we have concerns about the stacking, you know, at that blue, at that blue window. Stacking at that blue window could be particularly troubling. The ordinance required, the zoning ordinance requires stacking for at least five vehicles, which Abby, go back a couple, go back a couple to that, to what they showed. And what I have troubles with this one here is if you see in the sky blue, do you see how they, in sky blue, it looks like they've extended the curb? That is not what was provided at public hearing, and that doesn't even, you know, so that, the extension of that sky blue curb, there's a lot of design changes here that they're making to try to make five vehicles stacking spaces fit here, is staff's concern. I think that we would have a difficult time during the permitting and design process if a permitting, if a window was permitted here on the northern side. And it could create a circulatory, I mean, by closing off, but they're creating a very, very odd circulatory system to do so by extending that blue curb, that sky blue curb there. That was not provided at public hearing, and it's just one of their, that they just threw in on a, as a
They created this
Right, as in a response.
Modification request, right.
Correct.
What do these cars exit from this window? Are they going back around the building?
Correct.
So they're not coming straight out the back?
Right, so they would be following this blue path, and they would have to cross over the path of the, of the vehicles going to the southern window. It could be, you know, it could be up here where Abby's drawn it. It could be further down. You know, it all depends on what vehicles are there, but there would be some sort of crossing maneuver required.
And then explain the two cuts that they're wanting.
Two curb cuts?
Yes.
Abby, can you go back to the, do you have a diagram with the, right? So on here, on this one, you can see they're showing two full bidirectional curb cuts onto Mid-America, onto Mid-America Lane. Typically, the design standard, if this was on to a public right-of-way, the county would only permit one, you know, one drive aisle or one, excuse me, one curb cut onto, onto a road. Staff continues to find that one curb cut is appropriate. You can, you can appropriately, you know, enter the site with just one commercial-grade curb cut, is staff's finding.
Are they trying to avoid using the same cut for the last remaining lot back there?
Technical difficulty there.
They've not proposed anything on that eastern lot yet.
I've had some conversations on that, and my understanding, they've had several fast food restaurants and wanted to go in there, and they've been holding down, holding out for a sit-down restaurant with a bar that would service the hotel customers. And I'm just wondering if that's part of their thinking? Not to confuse all the traffic?
Well. Wayne?
Yeah.
This is Keith, and so we got these two lanes of traffic coming out of the south side of the building here onto an area where you have two, just one way coming out. And then, right? They've got to figure out where they got to go because the guy that's up next to the the building has to quickly get to the left-hand side, otherwise he's going to be running into a car right there. See, you know, where it's coming, it's two-way traffic right on the other side of that opening where they want to have the first curb cut.
A little confusing.
It is. I mean, if anything, if that's what they want, they should have, you know, they should have that, no access up into that area right there, if that's the case. And everybody's going to dump out to this, one way in and one way out, two lanes.
Can we maybe put a hold on this and go back
That's very confusing.
And have them clarify this whole situation?
Yes, staff can reach out to the petitioner and request, you know, you know, further examination of the circulation at the site.
Problems are, and I'm sure they don't want the confusion. But I see where Keith's coming from.
That's
It is confusing. And maybe that's why they want that second curb cut to avoid that.
Additionally, you know, one of the, one of the rationales between requiring cross-access with this site and lot three to the east would be to, you know, allow them to share parking and to share access as well. So there is a world where there could be an additional, you know, egress-ingress point to this site from lot three.
That's far into the future, depending upon what ends up happening there.
I think we're down to one lot if we it's been a long time coming. It's probably been a good twenty-five years to get this far. Did we have a motion on this?
I don't have that there's a motion on the table.
If it's okay with the commission, can we do a hold on this?
I'll make a motion for a hold.
Back into motion.
Okay.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor of the hold?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it six zero. And we'll go on to PC twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane.
So that was presented as new business as well as a letter of recommendation.
All right. And we got what, one correspondence item?
Yes. So this is PC thirty-four twenty-one, Stephen P. Lincoln, Kathy M. Jaeger, a request for a conditional use permit in the M one industrial district for a four point three four acre site at Bell Fountain Road and Hilltop Lane. The commission will recall that in January of this year, the staff presented a recommendation of approval, which was deemed denied for lack of five, five affirmative votes, which is needed for a conditional use permit. Then at the February fourteenth executive meeting, the commission voted to forward a letter denying issuance of the CUP to the county council. Subsequently, the council has adopted an order referring the matter back to this commission for further consideration. So as you'll recall, this site is located in North County, very far north on Bell Fountain Road, outlined here in red. The site consists of, like I mentioned, four point three four acres. It is developed with a single-family residence and a former mechanic shop, a prefabricated metal building, and a frame garage. So here is the site plan, the full site plan that was submitted at public hearing. The next slide shows a close-up of the, of the developed portions of the site. So outlined here in blue is point six two acres that is proposed to be subdivided off from the proposed vehicle repair center, which would remain on about three, three and three-quarters acres. So here on the preliminary site plan, you can see the metal building where the vehicle repair facility would be located and frame garage as well. There are three employee parking spaces proposed north of the building and four customer parking spaces west of the shop. There is asphalt on the site as well as some existing gravel. There is no lighting or signage proposed, nor is there proposed landscaping on this plan that went to public hearing. Subsequent to the council order or accompanying the council order, the petitioner submitted this revised plan, which notes some proposed landscaping along Bell Fountain Road. You can see the circles are Forsyth bushes, and then the three Xs close to the building are three Japanese maples. He's also indicated that the, the majority of the lot would be seeded this spring for grass. Additionally, you can see in front of the frame garage, he's indicated that he, he would remove that gravel and replace that with pavement, concrete or asphalt. So the department has prepared a letter recommending, or excuse me, a letter issuing the conditional use permit. It does include conditions of development, including that the, the drive aisles must be paved. We're not recommending allowing dustproof surfaces for the drive aisles. This would be more aesthetically pleasing and also would prevent wheel ruts from forming. We are recommending that the parking spaces themselves could be shown on a dustproof surface since that there's a little less wear and tear on the spaces themselves. We are recommending a thirty-five foot parking setback shown there in the dashed red. This is greater than the fifteen foot parking setback that's required by the M one. Additionally, we're recommending landscaping per the zoning ordinance, which would be a fifteen-foot wide buffer with one tree and four shrubs for every twenty feet. As I mentioned, there's no lighting proposed, but we would, we've drafted a condition limiting the height of those lighting standards to sixteen feet. The purpose of this is sixteen feet is the residential maximum, and this would help it blend in with the, you know, the surrounding residences in the area. Additionally, there is no signage proposed, but we are recommending that any future signage would be monument in style to add to the aesthetics of the site as well. Additionally, we are recommending, we've drafted the letter to include a provision for a site-proof decorative fence with a gate, that solid red line across the, the access drive to shield the view of the vehicles to be, to be repaired and the use generally. That could then become a decorative fence along the property line, doesn't necessarily need to be site-proof. And then that fence could come back around to, to connect the two buildings and create a secure area for, for the vehicles. Additionally, the letter includes a maximum of eight vehicles to be stored on the site, vehicles to be repaired, and then prohibits the storage of vehicles not related to this business or its customers as well. So this is an aerial photograph where we've kind of added some of those conditions. The X would be a paved area to be removed. That would be part of the landscape buffer. The area that would need to become paved, that is currently shown in gravel, and then the, the site-proof and decorative gate and decorative fence sort of surrounding that area. So the department had, like I mentioned, we have drafted this letter to issue the conditional use permit. We feel that the use is appropriate. The site's been zoned M one since nineteen sixty-five and has, excuse me, housed light industrial uses in that time. Additionally, the CUP procedure would allow this commission to institute these conditions of development to ensure the use is compatible with the surrounding residences. So I would ask for a motion of approval at this time.
I'd like to make a motion for a hold. Mr. Cunningham, I believe, was, he's absent today, and he had some issues with this. Commission would consider that.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a mo, first and a second to hold until Mr. Cunningham is back with us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes have it six zero. No site plans?
No site plans, but we do have an item on for the good of the order. I had a little bit of a snafu on, on Friday and neglected to put one of the correspondence items we received on the commission's agenda. So if the commission is willing, we'd like to present that item, but then take action on it at a special executive meeting tomorrow or later this week, if that's the commission's will. So Abby is prepared to present the correspondence item if the commission would like.
Now let's hear it.
All right, this is for PC twenty-eight dash twenty-one, Jamo West Properties LLC, which was a request for a change in zoning from M three FPM three NU and FPM U to C eight and FPC eight for six point one nine acres on the south side of Manchester Road, approximately two hundred and sixty feet west of Dietrich Road. As you probably recall, this site is in West County, and there you can see it outlined in red. The petitioner has requested an amendment to the C eight to allow a larger vehicle sales and office showroom at the site. They submitted a revised preliminary site development plan showing an eighty-one hundred square foot showroom. Currently, the the C eight ordinance is written to only allow a sixty-three hundred square foot showroom, and the department is recommending approval of this request. The petitioner indicated that the larger building would include a conference and training room and more office space. We find that this is a reasonable increase in size, and it can be accomplished within the building setbacks as written. And staff can facilitate a short executive meeting tomorrow for the commission to take action on this request if desired.
Right, because we didn't advertise, we need twenty-four hours worth of advertising before the commission can take action on any request. So there was a, there was an error. The staff did not, we did not get it onto the agenda, even though we had drafted all of this for your, for your consideration today. The petitioner is, they are, you know, asking for an expedited review. And so we told them, or we indicated that we would request the commission, if it's the commission's will to have a very, very short meeting to take action on this request prior to two weeks from today.
Jacob, just, just one quick question. When, when is our next scheduled
Meeting?
Executive meeting?
It's two weeks.
That would be the ninth of May.
Yeah.
The ninth of May. Because it seems as though that, that has been switching from the beginning of the month to like this one, the end of the month. Is that, is that something that we want to continue to, to do?
I think
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I think that that's just a quirk of the calendar because we've been having, it's as of, for, I think, for a while now, we've been having executive meetings every other week for, for a while now. We've had a pretty robust number of requests through, for actions. So we've been doing it every other week. I think that's probably just, it's fallen this way because quirks of the calendar at this point.
Okay.
According to the schedule you put out, the same thing is going to happen in May and June, isn't it?
Yeah. So we have, because, and I think that's because there's some, there's some holidays in May, and there's a holiday in June. Without, I don't have the calendar right in front of me, but I think that we continue having an executive meeting every other week.
Is there any way that we can go back to our general schedule of having one executive meeting a month? And that used to be the first Monday of the month?
If the commission would, if the commission would like to have a conversation amongst itself to set, to change its calendar, that's completely within the commission's purview.
Well, defer that to our chairman.
I'll give with commissioners and see how they want to handle it, and we'll get back to the department on it. So what do we want to do on this correspondence item?
Mr. Chairman, I can't make the meeting tomorrow. Won't be available.
Yeah. And, and I, and I know I, I won't be able to either.
So if it's the, if the commission would like to say that it would prefer just to wait for two weeks, that's within, that's within the commission's purview.
Is that what you prefer? Commissioners?
Is there a rush, Jacob, being pushed your way?
The, the petitioner has requested, if it's possible, for the commission to take this up with some, with some, with some, with more speed, but if the commission, you know, it's not, the commission doesn't have to do so. You know, what we would, what we would tell the petitioner is that, you know, you will take it up at your next meeting in two weeks. And, you know, go from there. You know, I don't think that, Abby, how, where, where are they in site development plan review process right now?
They have not submitted a site development plan as far as I'm aware.
You know, my recommend, you know, my direction to them would be as to if they'd like to start You know, my recommend, you know, my direction to them would be as to if they'd like to start their site development plan review process as though. You know, with the risk that the commission may not recommend, um, granting it, um, that's their prerogative. They could submit a site development plan. You know, uh, showing something like that, we would review it and say that this is not permitted until, um, the commission makes a recommendation of approval and the county council concurs. But, you know, to to keep them moving forward if that's, if that's their choice. Um, so there's, there's multiple ways they can move forward.
I I I'll just make one more comment about, uh. Ha- having these meetings, uh, uh, there are people who I've spoken to. Who called and spoken to me about not knowing about these meetings. In time to sit in and just listen. I know they're public, so they can't speak. But we've always experienced some people who want to be there when, uh, something of interest is on the agenda.
Is there, these are publicly, I, I'm not certain that I'm, is there something else that the commission would like done with its notifications? We notify these online, we notify petitioners. This is, I think we kind of by and large continue it in the same way, at least in the time period that I've been with St. Louis County. You know, we've been noticing these, um, you know, fairly the, in a very similar manner than we used to.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm going back a little bit when things were scheduled, uh. Throughout the year, on a monthly basis, everybody pretty much knew. First Mondays were going to be the executive meeting and then. At one time, we had. The other Mondays as public meetings and that was adjusted depending on the workload.
You know, what I would say is that, um, you know, we. We have been doing it every other week that actually increases the number and frequency during time, you know, to to make sure that there's a, an opportunity for executive action. You know, uh, but if it's the will of the commission that it would like to modify its calendar to only have executive meetings. On the first and third or the second and fourth Mondays exclude, you know, exclude like the fifth Mondays, that's kind of what's happened is that. On a month when we've had five Mondays, um, we've just sort of, that sort of twirling through months that have more than five Mondays is, or more than four Mondays. Is when, um, things, you know, change, switch up a little bit. You know, the, the board of zoning adjustment meets every other week, you're, you're, you know, irrespective of, um, whether it's the first or third Wednesday or the second and fourth. It meets every other week, um, no matter what throughout the year. Um, it it's sort of a give and take, it's at the commission's discretion. If you, if the commission would like to to change its calendar, um, staff is happy to 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 do so.
Thank you.
Personally, I like the every two weeks. Okay.
I have a question, uh, Jake. Are the personal emails given to the public of the commissions?
Yes, any email that you have provided and indicated is the, is the email that you want to receive, uh, public comment at is what would be, um, provided to. Would be provided to the public. It is when, um, that those email addresses that you've indicated are are your, uh, you know, your desired ones. Is what the public would get when they request, um, specifically, um, anyone's email addresses.
So they don't come through the county anymore, like we.
Well, I think it it depends. I mean, typically when people have make comment, those comments do come to the planning department, either to planning at St. Louis County Mo.gov. Or they go to Mel, um, you know, so then those, those, um, you know, those public comments are then collated. And I, and I think you saw, um, you know, we've started or we instituted it, this was Mel's idea, um, to to put a cover memo on top of all of that public comment. So that now you can, we're trying to make sure that each petition, you see exactly how many written public comments we've gotten, so that you have a memo at the beginning of each. Executive meeting with any additional public comment that was in writing. Um, so we did that starting this, you know, with this meeting. But if any, and so what I mean by that is if anyone asks specifically, can I specifically get direct information, you know, directly contact the planning commissioners? We give them their, your information, but typically we, we state that you can provide information to the department and we will disseminate it to you prior to your meetings. That's just to preclude or.
Individual. Email boxes through St. Louis County? And just avoid. This issue.
I think the, the issue with, if you were given like an at St. Louis County Mo.gov and then you used it on your personal computer. I think. I don't know if that would, um, be a more complicated sh- sunshine question. I think we've looked into that a little bit, um. But we've not.
I think you just come into St. Louis County and get forwarded on to us?
I think forwarding does the, um, creates the same issue, having it forward.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, I would like to s- to say something. I, I agree that we should continue with the first Monday of the month. The time for our meetings.
Okay.
So did we resolve the email or is it coming to the county, is it coming directly to us?
What the public hearing notice says, it has my email address on it. If people want to submit comment, I would say a lot of them come to me. But then Abby also gets the ones that come to the planning, uh, the general planning inbox and she forwards those to me as well.
And you would forward it to us, right?
Right, so then you get it with the information report, correct?
That's great, that's, that's, that's probably a clean way to do that.
Sure, and what I would say also is that I, your, your emails are not on the website. I think they might have been on the old version of the website, but they aren't on the current county website. But like Jacob mentioned, if people ask for them, that's when they're provided.
Okay. Then on the, uh. We didn't, I think we, we got a decision on the, uh. Correspondence item. We want to hold that till the ninth? Commissioners?
Well, I think if you take, take a roll call, who can be there, uh. Tomorrow, uh. I think, uh. There's two of us already can't be there. So I don't know, you know, if you.
That would not.
People, you can have it without us.
That, that wouldn't give us a quorum.
Mr. Cunningham is still out as well.
Go ahead of town.
Oh, alright.
Well, didn't Jacob say, uh, he didn't limit it till tomorrow, didn't he say, or later this week?
I think I had said that.
Or, okay. So if not tomorrow, what about following?
Wednesday or Thursday?
I cannot do Wednesday.
How about Thursday?
Thursday's fine.
Okay, Thursday.
I'm checking, cause we're. We'll be out of town. We'd be out of town till next week.
Can you? Can you use your iPhone?
Uh, yeah, probably so.
It shouldn't take too long.
No. Yeah, I could probably do that.
Okay, let's do it Thursday.
So Mel will send out a, yeah, four PM for Thursday.
Okay. All right, I think that's it.
Okay, that'll be the twenty-eighth at four PM. I will send out a, uh, I will send an email after this meeting.
Okay, anything else?
Very good. And and Mel, that email will have a number for me to call in.
I'll put the call in information for you, yes.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
Mel. Mel, this is Keith. Could you do the same thing with me? Uh, it's working right now, but sometimes this doesn't work down here where I'm in.
Sure, I'll put, I'll, I'll put it in there for everyone.
If there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
Go moved.
Discussion?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it six zero and we're adjourned till Thursday.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.